Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Our president will not be able to make it to our pre-council meeting, but he will be here for our 10:30 meeting. We are now in the hands of our capable city clerk, Ms. Lisa Lambert.
This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council. Tuesday, July 28th. We have approval of minutes from July 21st.
No issue.
Public hearing today is a public hearing to declare the structures at 727 Florida Street, 353 Dunbar Street, 520 Euclid Street, 2108 Buckner Place, 905, also known as 1009 Gale Street, and formerly 1009 Tennessee Street. Public nuisance and ordering these demolished. 1365 Glenn Street and 7320, also formerly known as 7312 Fourth Street. Public nuisances and ordering these demolished.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes. On the first one, 727 Florida Street extension, I visited that property. The foundation is sound, the house is sound, not a one of broken. You can't enter. It's steel bars, iron or steel bars all around the house. What has happened is that there's a huge oak tree on the side of the house, and limbs from the tree has grown down into the roof. So part of the roof is damaged. Other than that, if someone put a roof on that house, they can just keep going. And I certainly don't think, at this moment, that that house should be knocked down. Now, the foundation was undermined, it's open to vagaries, and all of that. I would say, yes. It's benign neglect. But the city didn't even go out there to try to secure the house. The house is already secured with bars. Nobody can get in it, no way, shape, form, or fashion. It's a brick house. And I think we need more information on this. I'm going to recommend that we lay this over for 60 days. And I want more information on this, to see if we can't find the owner. Used to quiet Tyler Lake, and the city acquired. And fix it up and reset it. I just don't think, in this area, housing is a major issue. And for us to knock this house down, I think is a disservice to the community. And I'm not supporting knocking this house down.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, just to respond real quick. What we see in the community is, a lot of times, these structures, there's additions to them. And the majority of the problems that we're seeing, which is the roofing problems, the exterior wall, and some foundation issues, are really related to the addition. And we can see in some of the photographs submitted, that the roof and the exterior wall is completely rotten away. And Mr. Richardson is correct, that you see from the front, that this structure is solid with the brick, but the addition is not brick. And the overall structure condition is what we're addressing here. And yes, we can go through and do a combination, like a demolition of the addition and secure the remaining structure. And everything that you've mentioned would give us the opportunity, if the owner does not step up and pay the cost if we fix them. And then we can go forward with a lien foreclosure to flip it to somebody who would down the road. However, at this point, the addition is what we're really focusing on here, as the public nuisance that is actually deteriorating to the point where we need to take action.
Ms. Vice President? I saw no part of that house that was not brick. I saw no addition that was separate from the other house. And that's in the front. That's in the front. Yeah, that's... I thought he was talking around the back or somewhere. That...I didn't see nothing there that would cause us to knock the house down. I didn't see not one thing. Yeah, it needs a roof. I agree with that. It needs a roof. But anyway, I'm going to...I want...Mr. Dunbar? That's the front. It's some boars that need to be fixed, but the house is standing there. So I'm not for knocking it down for that. Do you know anything about the owner?
Yes, sir. If you look in your packet, you'll see that the title report, a copy of the title report is there. And there's listed of the owners. And there's also a tax sale interest that we've sent notice to. And regretfully, they have not responded to us or taken any action to repair the structure. At this time, I understand that it is vacant.
Yes, it's vacant.
So, Mr. David, so you're saying that Ford is ceded to inquire like the title? I mean, do we have to go through this process of, I mean, saying it is a public nuisance?
I'm not sure, Mr. Vice President, what you're asking. Is this, yes, we would have to go through the public process to declare it a public nuisance for the city to take action?
I'm talking to inquire the title and et cetera, correct?
No, that would be on the back end if the owner of the property does not pay any fixed costs associated with the action that we're authorized to take. Whether we decide to demolish it completely, or a combination to partially demolish the addition, or completely secure it. The council has that determination. But whatever is ultimately decided, and those costs associated, would be fixed into a bill or an invoice. And if that is not paid, then we have the ability to place a lien on the property. And then there is a lien foreclosure process.
So your recommendation for this particular property, because I'm looking at the pictures now, is to demolish the whole property? Is that's what your office is?
At this point, that would be the recommendation overall, because there's no action on the property owner. However, the ultimate decision is the city council. We do have options to secure or repair. But in this case, I would recommend that we go forward with the full demolition.
Let me ask you another question, because I kind of see what Mr. Richardson is saying, but just to try to get a clear understanding where you're coming from. Because I'm looking at the house too, and again, I'm looking on pictures, not, you know, eye to eye, having been on the property. So I see that the back part of the house, more towards the roof, is what is really just like messed up. But the rest of the house is brick. So to me, I mean, I'm not no contractor, but to go ahead and redo the roof, what else would the house would need to keep from being demolished?
As mentioned in the application, we've got the roof and the damage on the exterior walls. And we're not really looking at the brick. It's the wood siding that is deteriorated. One of the photographs that you have is that the entire window casing is rotten and deteriorating to the point where the amount of water that's inside that structure has been not allowed to enter the structure for many, 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 many months, possibly years.
So really, the interior is messed up inside the house, is what you're saying?
That is highly likely. However, we don't make interior inspections. We only make the exterior inspections, looking to see if the components, the roof, exterior walls, and foundation is structurally sound. And in this case, we find that the roof and exterior walls are not.
Ms. Rich?
Yes. In our report, I'm not sure what that word is, but I'm not sure what it says.
Rescored. Rescored.
Rescored.
Rescored. And that's what they do to all these buildings?
No, I don't understand that. So the review committee took this back in September. So going on 10 months? No, yeah, 10 months.
That is correct.
Is that a normal spread? Before it makes it to the council, why was this down in September 13? Was that the...did that go through all that timeline? Is that being made aware?
That is an excellent question. And yes, there is part of the BLIT survey. Municipal enforcement is made aware of structures that we need to investigate. And based upon the windshield survey, driving down the street, we see criterias that you see on that form that's addressed in the BLIT survey. That BLIT survey, based on the score, triggered the review committee. And that review committee is made up of members from municipal enforcement, the legal department, community housing development, historic, and also real estate. And those committee members will review the file, pretty much the same information that you're looking at, and look at criteria from their expertise, and determine a resolution path. And that resolution path back in September is what guided us to this point here. It triggers us to send notice to the owners, based on the resolution path of the review committee, the BLIT review committee.
So the original score was a 40, then it went to a 60. So is the higher the score, then more towards demolition?
That is correct. The scoring system, anything above a 50, if I recall correctly, would be a demolition score. And again, the BLIT survey, the initial BLIT survey, is a windshield, driving down with interns to assist us with the geography of the mapping systems. We look at the front of the buildings. That triggers us to look at, at another later date, a complete inspection. My team will go out and make a complete inspection, based upon the checklist that you see in the packet.
And then you'll go inside, David, at that point?
No, sir. We would normally not go inside at all. As long as the exterior of the structure is safe, we would not make an interior inspection.
Is it normal to go to July after a September one? To actually get it to the council and make the photographs? Is that a normal range of time?
We had some...
No, you can't have it.
Normally, what would happen is, we would have the BLIT committee, and then we'd trigger the 45-day notice, which would then seek about 50 to 60 days, get us here on the council's agenda. But it looks like it took us a little bit longer to get here on this one.
I didn't know that. I heard from the council owner. It looks like there's a picture that we have that shows the house across the street, and that it's in fine condition. So it's like...
Fred, do you know?
Mr. Vice President, can I make a comment?
Yes, Ms. Mayor.
The process that we're using is the same process that we've used for the last, at least, four years. If Mr. Richardson doesn't want this house torn down, I would suggest to David, take it off the list. There are other houses that need to be torn down, and we'll focus somewhere where it's not controversial. I would suggest we move on.
Ms. Richardson?
Yeah, I said that I'm going to...I'll most likely lay this over 30 days when we get to it.
Madam Clerk?
Just let me say...
Mr. Davis?
Mr. Vice President? Mr. Dolphin Ball?
He's coming back. What's your best estimate of the number of blighted properties we have in the city at this time?
Based on the 2020 BLIT survey, we're looking at approximately 770 blighted structures. Those are residential structures only that's surveyed. And it's a combination of occupied structures and vacant structures.
We have a lot. We have, obviously, no matter how I calculate it, we have hundreds of these blighted houses in the city. And we've made good progress, but we've got a lot of work in front of us. I would be opposed to the city getting into the business of repairing these blighted properties for resale, unless they have some kind of historic nature. And even then, I'm skittish about it. So I think the issue is, as the mayor has said, we either move ahead with this, or we just take it off the list and don't do anything with it. Thank you.
Just to follow up, Mr. Davis, just for a brief second. That is why you see the review committee, that we have experts from their individual fields, not necessarily just municipal enforcement, but legal, historic, real estate, to help us make those decisions, just like you mentioned.
Ms. Vice President?
Ms. Richardson?
I don't know of a time since I've been on this council, that the council member made an appeal to his or her fellow council members regarding blighted property to lay it over, that the council rejected it. If y'all want to reject it, reject it. You'll be sending the president.
Fred, do you know? Mr. Vice President?
I don't...I went yesterday and I inspected the house. The house is not willing to be knocked down.
Yeah, but let's say that, from my perspective, I don't go to every one of the blighted houses. I might know where they are, but generally speaking, somebody called me and said, hey, look, this thing ought not get torn down. This is my property.
No, no.
They didn't do that.
No.
Because the city's having a problem reaching the owner and establishing that contact. And I just, you know, I just wondered what the interest is, and how you came to know about it, other than that. You check every one of them?
Every one, yes. Oh, my...yes, sir. Every one I get, if it's in my district, I go and check.
And you go onto the property?
Yes.
And you've looked in this thing, in the windows?
This is a tag.
I'm just saying that this...
We had one on Persimmon Street here not long ago. I don't believe Mr. Man's been over there. He asked to give the property owner 90 days. We gave the property owner 90 days. Now you want to know, did I go and hug anybody and kiss anybody? I didn't do no more than other council members have done in the past.
You generally know, Fred. I'm not picking on you. I just say, generally, when we do this, somebody shows up right there and says, please save my property.
Didn't bother.
I don't have any objection to hold it over.
No, I don't either.
I have no objection to hold it over. My objection would be to expending significant city resources to rehabilitate it.
That's not before us at this time.
Ms. Rich? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Madam Clerk?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Tim Pate Hamilton and Ashley Warfield, request to speak regarding business and community relations, recount of recent experience with local business owners and Mobile Police Department. And they had several questions regarding that. Antonio Moore, regarding forming a public safety website for public use to include policies and procedures from Mobile Police Fire Departments and Emergency Management Agencies. Mary Smith, regarding community impact of police department. Tiffany Prada, community impact of withholding police departments' policies and procedures. Reggie Hill, has admired of issues that he would like to address. He wants to continue from last week and, you know, other...he's also requested verbatim response for official records. We don't do verbatim for individual speaking, but for council members and mayor statements. Raymond Bell, regarding giving an update on the Mobile Sports and Entertainment Group for Hank Aaron Stadium. Damian Marks, regarding amendment of noise ordinance, section 39-96, Police Citizens Community Relations Advisory Council.
I would like to have a brief discussion on this before we go into our 10:30 meeting. I've asked our attorney, Chris Aldrich, to examine the law to see whether or not 3996, anyone challenged 3996. That's the section we're trying to amend. And if so, will he bring back to me what he found? And Chris, would you briefly go over what you found and what it had to say?
Yes, sir. In the '90s, the predecessor to this particular code section, it barred noise that disturbed anyone anywhere, and also barred singing, yelling, chanting, or noises from any device that could be heard 50 feet away. And that was not just on the right of ways, it was everywhere. And there was a case where a guy, I think his name was Duffy, was preaching on the corner with an amplifier. He got a ticket and appealed it to the Alabama Supreme Court, which held the ordinance unconstitutional. Generally, you can regulate noise, but the regulations have to be tailored to legitimate government interests, and you've got to balance that with First Amendment rights. So in that case, the court suggested...well, they didn't suggest, this is the law in general, that you have to have reasonable time, place, and manners restrictions. And they suggested specifying decibel levels and setting timeframes. Also talked about carving out an exclusion for the human voice. The Mobile ordinance was revised after that, and they removed the singing and yelling part. And it was further limited to public property, and limited to using sound reproducing devices that could be heard 25 feet away. The proposer vision that you asked for basically creates the decibel levels and the timeframes, like that court case said. It's 85 during the day, for most of the day, and 50 late at night, from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. So that's what the case said. And the change kind of goes along with that.
It would appear to be that what replaced what we initially had was more restrictive other than the other law governs property everywhere, private, it doesn't matter, public or private property. And then they came back and enacted a law for public property only. But the restrictions were greater. The law in 1997 said you couldn't be heard no more than 50 feet. They came back with a new law that said, no, 25 feet. And the judge, the court, and this was unanimously approved by a court, no dissenting judge in this, spoke a long time on regulating the human voice. Putting some regulation on the human voice, whether it's amplified or not amplified, it's the human voice. And it seems to me that we have come back and gone contrary to the rule of the court. And what I'm trying to substitute is, go with the quietest place in the city should be where we live and where we sleep. Our residence. Is amend that section and use the residential noise ordinance, and move on, 85 in the daytime, 50 at night, and let's move on. But it seems to me that this 25 feet, and you don't have, you know, you don't have nothing to go on, you don't have nothing to measure the sound of the voice. I think that's going to run contrary to what that Alabama Supreme Court ruled. And I'm going, at 10:30, I'm going to ask the council to go with the amendment version that we replaced that 25 feet and used decibels, and use the same law that we have in the residential section of the city.
Any other council members? Ms. Rich?
This is kind of hard to follow. I tried to listen real good. This is information that you were working off of, that Fred gave out, this paper. Can you see that?
Is that the case?
That's the case.
Yeah. Okay. It's just too much legal ease in it. But the question I have is, you mentioned that our ordinance is only good for public property when noise is emanating from public property? Then why do bars and restaurants and venues come to get a noise waiver? Because that would be private. I'm not sure I under...unless I misunderstood what you commented on.
You didn't. The current ordinance says unlawful to operate a device reproducing sound, enter on any public property, including any public street, road, building, et cetera, in such a manner that sounds generated 25 feet or more away.
Okay.
Now, so it doesn't talk about bars.
Right. But they, I mean, you've certainly been in meetings where we've had waivers for venues that are not public. But do they mean that they advertise and are open to the public? Or does it literally mean public property?
I think it means...
Well, that's what we're doing when these restaurants come down, or bars, rather.
I think it means public property, but a lot of the noise waivers are in residential areas, and there's a different ordinance for that.
Right. And, okay, and that's what Councilman Richardson wants to put for public properties?
He wants to use the same sound levels.
Okay, the decibel reading.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. We had a committee meeting, and I was under the impression that the police department, with their attorney, was going to make some recommendations on how to improve the ordinance. And I'm wondering whether that's for enforcement? Because we could put something on the books, but if they can't enforce it, or don't have the tools to enforce it? So I don't see anybody...
That's kind of where we ended up with the committee meeting.
Were they prepared?
A little bit unclear.
But that, I mean, I felt good about not...I understand what Councilman Richardson is trying to do. I get that. But at the same time, I'd like to hear from the police department on what their recommendation. And Ms. Ramon was present, but she didn't have anything to give us. But our meeting was last week, and they had asked for two weeks. So I wonder if the administration knows if anything's available to the council before we vote on this.
Mr. Vice President, I can speak on that. At this time, we don't have anything to add or detract from this particular change in the ordinance. The things that we need to deal with, we can probably deal with at a later time, but we're not going to go forward with it at this time.
But it's an important ordinance.
Hold on, Ms. Rich. Ms. Rich, you finished?
I guess.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes. The police would have no greater problem dealing with this than they do with residential noise. It's the same...we're just using, taking the decibels over to public property. We haven't heard anybody complain about the police not being able to police residential property. They use the decibels over there. I don't think that's no issue. This wouldn't be no greater issue. We're just putting the same law on private property as we do on public property, moving on.
But they said downtown, the ambient reading was already coming in close to 50 and over 50, just the ambient reading.
It wasn't coming from the sidewalks of the street, it was coming from a club. This law has nothing to do with private property. That noise was coming from private property, and they still going to be making the same noise. This only dealing with our parks, sidewalks, and streets downtown. They didn't say no woman's out in the park that night making this kind of noise. It was in these clubs. This has nothing to do with those nightclubs, on the public street sidewalks, public buildings.
Let me see, our Public Safety Director, and I know the city attorney had made a statement, but, and I know you just walked in, Mr. Public Safety Director, we own this ordinance with the general noise ordinance. From the Public Safety Department, well, the police department, do you think there's anything in the future that I want to change, or currently, or in the future, or nearby future, or is no change at all?
Of the...
The Public Safety Department, well, the police department, Wanda Roman and the police chief and his staff are reviewing it. What we want to address is the issue about bass, which the decibel meter does not address on the A-band. And so that's where we are with that. I mean, the proposed amendment that was proposed by Councilman Richardson, as we addressed in committee, is we took the ambient noise levels of downtown on a Sunday night, which is the quietest night that we probably have in the downtown area, and it still exceeded the fifty decibel reading that's being proposed. And so should it pass, it would basically put, it's unenforceable. I mean, because the ambient noise level already exceeds the fifty decibel. The twenty-five feet, I think that was a big concern, would be if you're making noise above the ambient noise, that, you know, and if you want to extend that range, that would make sense to me. But again, the fifty decibel reading is already exceeded even on the quietest night in the downtown area. So even traffic noise exceeds that, and that's a residential standard that really is not suitable for commercial areas or entertainment districts.
Ms. Richardson, are you finished, Public Safety?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Richardson?
Yes. Our attorney just made a presentation. He took a look at whether or not thirty-nine ninety-six had been challenged, our noise ordinance. It had been, went all the way to the Alabama Supreme Court. The Alabama Supreme Court struck it down. At that time, they could make noise up to fifty feet from any kind of device on any property. Alabama Supreme Court struck it down, said, no, you can't put no limit on the human voice. That, that's it. So we came back and said, no, twenty-five feet. Now, the court struck down fifty feet. We came back and wrote in twenty-five feet. So what makes, I think our law is legal if the Alabama Supreme Court already struck down fifty feet. And they didn't care how you was producing it. So what I'm recommending now is that you all are already policing residential noise. The ordinance says you can make up to eighty-five decibels of noise in the daytime, fifty at night. I'm recommending that we strike to twenty-five feet and put on public property only. It had nothing to do with no nightclub downtown. What they're doing in the juke joints has nothing to do with none of that. Sidewalks, streets, parks, that we use the residential noise ordinance. Eighty-five decibels at night, fifty decibels, I mean, in the daytime, fifty decibels at night, and let's move on. I think we would be within what the Supreme Court ordered us to be.
So, Mr. Chairman, let me clear up two things. So what Mr. Arledge said and what Director Barber said are not mutually exclusive. The, what Mr. Arledge said is correct about the nineteen ninety-six case. It deals with legality, and that's one difference for enforceability. But what Director Barber is saying is, he's not talking about the constitutionality or the legal aspect of it. He's talking about the practical problems that we run into as a police force, which is why we're not weighing in now, the practical issues of enforcement. Because the bass is typically the big problem with us, both in the residential area and otherwise. And that's something that's not being addressed at this time. So we're not saying that it is unconstitutional or illegal. Nobody has an issue with that. I think it's totally legal what you have down on the books right now and what you're proposing. The issue is the same practical problems that we run into with the current ordinance, or the same, the residential ordinance, are the same practical problems with enforceability and measurement that we'll run into with this one. Nobody's going to fix this in this chamber today, but that's why we're not weighing in on this. I think that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Ms. Rich? I think if you go downtown at night, you're not going to find any bass equipment on a public street, because you can't get on, you can't hardly drive down there yourself, let alone stand up in the street and use bass. The bass is not coming from a public street, it's not coming from a public sidewalk, it's not coming from a public park, it's not a part of what we're addressing today. I don't disagree, I disagree with what you're saying. But it's not coming from public property. So it's not a part of what we're dealing with today. I agree, and I go down there here with bass too, but it's not coming from the sidewalks, street, not a park, that's what we're dealing with today.
Madam Clerk?
Ordinance is held over. Since we've discussed thirty-nine zero two zero, sixty-four zero two three is the zoning property at ten seventy-three Bernie Sutton Drive from R one and R two to R one. Resolutions held over, zero-one five-three-three, authorized agreement with Neil Schaefer for C, E, and I services, roundabout installation at the intersection of Broad Street and Canal Street. Zero-eight five-three-four, approved purchase order to State of Alabama Correctional Industries for furniture for the police department. Zero-eight five-three-five, approved purchase order to United Rentals of North America for Skid steer loader. Zero-eight five-three-six, approved purchase order to Corlins Incorporated for annual renewal of timekeeping and workforce management software licenses. Twenty-one five-three-seven, authorized contractor for Robert J. Baggett for the emergency removal and reinstallation of the floating dock at Cooper Riverside Park on an as-needed basis. Twenty-one five-three-six, authorized contract with BFI Way Services through Business and Public Services of Mobile for recycling equipment rental and hauling. Twenty-five five-three-nine, grantees Mr. Alabama Power Company for overhead service in PFC Howard Johnson Park. Twenty-one five-fourty, authorized contract with Arena Fire Protection for the Cruz Terminal first floor fire sprinkler system replacement. A E has asked us to table this item. Twenty-one five-four-one, authorized contract with Allied Emergency Services for Bureau of Clean Emergency Services for the emergency environmental remediation of the Explorium Science Center. Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, twenty-one zero twenty-four, ordinance to regulate food trucks. Thirty-four zero twenty-five, ordinance to amend chapter thirty-four of the city code regarding short-term lodging or rentals.
Mr. Vice President?
Yeah, Mr. Davis.
I'd like to know whether there's been any coordination with the administration with respect to these two proposed ordinances.
Mr. Davis, I think the president called me this morning, and he said he's going to look to send these two committees, and he would have signed it at ten thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Consent resolutions being introduced. Thirty-one five-four-two, approved grant application to the Bureau of Justice Assistance for fiscal year twenty-twenty justice assistance grant, one hundred fifty-five thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars, no local match. Thirty-seven five-four-three, recommend approval of the ABC Board for issuance of a special retail license for Mobile Sports and Entertainment Group on Bowling Brothers Boulevard. Forty-five four-four through five-five-zero are the structures being cleared, public notices and ordering those demolished. Sixty-five five-one, approval award of special bonus to firefighter of the month for July fire medic Mac Hillman. CIP resolutions being introduced. Twenty-one five-five-two, authorized contract with James H. Adams and Sons Construction for Airport Boulevard cutoff East I sixty-five Service Road, two hundred thirty-one thousand, four hundred thirty-six dollars. Twenty-one five-five-three, authorized contract with Tyndall Construction for Richards D A R House exterior repairs, two hundred fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
Mr. Vice President?
Mr. Davis.
I'd just like to come back to twenty-one five-five-two for a minute and explain what that is. This is the entrance to the East I sixty-five Service Road at the southeast corner of Airport Boulevard and I sixty-five. And if you're headed east on Airport Boulevard and you come over I sixty-five, right when you get to kind of the bottom of the hill, there's an entrance to the Service Road that sort of comes out at Bel Air Mall. There have been a number of safety concerns with respect to that entrance to the Service Road. There have been some accidents as a result of it, tends to back up traffic. And this is to correct the safety issues with respect to that, and basically involves doing away with that entrance to the Service Road altogether. Just wanted to let you all know what that was about.
Madam Clerk?
Zero-eight five-five-four, approve item base bid to W W Granger for fiber optics supplies. Zero-eight five-five-five, approve item base bid for various medical supplies. Zero-eight five-five-six, approve purchase order to North American Fire Equipment Inc. for various fire equipment, twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred seventy-nine dollars. Zero-eight five-five-seven, approve purchase order to Sunbelt Fire for task force fire monitor nozzles, twenty-seven thousand, three hundred twenty-one dollars. Zero-eight five-five-eight, approve item base bid for large truck tire retreading and repair. Twenty-one five-five-nine, authorized contract with Jay Hunt Enterprises General Contractors for Lab People Stadium Walking Trail, one hundred eighty-eight thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars. Twenty-one five-sixty, authorized contract with Arena Fire Protection for fire and sprinkler backflow preventer repairs at various city facilities, sixteen thousand, three hundred thirty dollars. Twenty-one five-six-one, authorized contract with Jay Payne Organization for Parkway Sales Center Interior Renovation, one hundred sixty-six thousand. Twenty-one five-six-two, authorized contract with Green Magic Landscape for right-of-way mowing on Dolphin Street, one thousand fifteen dollars. Twenty-one five-sixty-three, authorized contract with Complete Management Group for mowing of downtown streets, thirty-four thousand, first year, ninety-one thousand, years two and three announcements.
Council members?
Mr. Vice President?
Mr. Davis?
I believe we have all been reviewing the twenty-twenty-one CIP plans and looking at the out-years. The question I have is whether, I understand that the administration intends to put the capital improvement plan on the agenda at an early date. We have had sometimes in the past a finance committee meeting as a preface to that going on the agenda. I just wasn't sure we needed one, since we've all been meeting individually with the staff, but I'm open to it if the council wants to do it that way.
I do know for a fact that some council members is not pleased of how the CIP plans is going. And I believe that's going, you know, will be like individual, because each person, each council member has certain things that they don't like, but that's before them at this time. So I do know that there are going to be some ongoing meetings with individual council members, but as far as in the whole council, I mean, that's just, you know, up to you all, you know?
Well, the individuals have to get solved before the total gets solved. We just, it's my opinion that we need to get this done before we go into budget, so that when we're addressing budget and there's a line for CIP, that is already something that we have fixed, instead of mixing the two. We tried to do that in the past, it hasn't worked them too well.
Yeah, it seemed like to me that these were best handled through individual discussions, and I just didn't think that we needed a, but again, I'm open to it if that's what the council wants to do, but I didn't, I wasn't exactly sure how a finance committee meeting would advance the process.
Well, can I comment? We had a CIP subcommittee, so if that's the topic, that committee could meet. I know my office was interested in getting a status report and some copies of where there's funds still left in CIP, or if the project's going to collapse because those years are up, that it was allocated for, but there was no planning done or any movement. So I've asked for this numerous times, and so I guess this gives me a forum. When we have the meeting where the whole council sits down for CIP, it gives us the opportunity, you know, to look at the whole and to also get those kind of documents that, I don't know, maybe some of you have been given that information of the status and the up, you know, information. The last CIP meeting was a Zoom meeting, the next one will be Zoom, and there are slides, but we don't necessarily get copies of that information. And then when I ask for the status of the different projects that have been on the list for a number of years, you know, where they are, are they closed out, as I just mentioned, so.
There are two issues, we're talking about two different things. The issue I brought up was the approval of the twenty-twenty-one CIP.
I understand.
There are all these other issues, what happens with the past years.
Funds that could move, funds that could move.
What's happened with the past years, what's going to happen in the future years? That's a much bigger, longer discussion.
Right, that's why a committee meeting might be nice, of the CIP at least, before we go into the final approval of the CIP.
I'm with Mr. Williams.
I mean, we used to get status reports that were hard copies. Well, we could print them out, they were emailed to us, but we could look at them and we could keep them as a list of running projects, and that has not been afforded to us. And I believe that that's something that's very important when you're making up the next budget cycle, based on what projects are now collapsed, can that money move over? It was allocated, not spent, and it's just that everything seems to be a work in progress, and then I never am giving the information that I'm requesting. And I can't direct staff, but I can ask, and I have been asking.
Well, I would get with the president, and we'll see by doing a CIP meeting as a whole, and ask in the administration about if they can give us the updates. If that's fine with you, Ms. Rich, that would be good.
I mean, we used to get reports, and they were pretty thorough. They told us where our project was.
All right, we'll make a meeting.
I think we've given, we give fairly, I think quarterly, if I'm not mistaken, updates on the CIP, and we're happy to reproduce another update to that so that you have that information and share the slides again, answer any questions. Ultimately, the goal is to have all that be on a website so that you can look at it anytime you want and get an updated status. We're not quite there yet, but we will be there. But I agree with Councilman Davis that that's a little bit of a different issue than, because we're happy to do that, and we've given it, we have it effectively ready right now. But the issue of the twenty-one through twenty-five-six CIP is one that we need to discuss in terms of budgeting standpoint. So, but we're happy to have that other piece.
The twenty and twenty-one budget, the next budget cycle could be affected by what is no longer a project but was funded, and monies could move and different amounts can be achieved.
The impacts, there's very, bottom line is, there's very little impacts, because the bulk, if not all of that, is already allocated to projects for those years. We've had great success in closing out the early years with the seventeen, eighteen, sixteen's done, seventeen, eighteen years, so that we only have nineteen and twenty that we're currently working on. That's, the goal is to have those completely closed out, to include fiscally closed out by the end of this fiscal year.
Maybe Ms. Rich could meet with you or your staff at an early date, and we could move ahead with the-
That's fine, we're happy to provide an individual update if you'd like.
I'll look forward to that, thank you.
Any other council members? Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, I had a-
Ms. Davis?
The face mask ordinance, I talked to Mr. Arledge before this meeting started, and our face mask ordinance, to the best of his calculations, will expire on Sunday. And the governor's mandate expires on the thirty-first, which is three days from now.
Friday.
Friday. I didn't know what the council's feeling on that might be, whether we wanted to wait and see what the, if we wait and see what the governor's going to do, and she doesn't reimpose a mandate, then we'd go for, we'd go either permanently- reimpose a mandate, then we'd go for, we'd go either permanently or for a few days without, without a mandate. So I just wanted to see how it's about that.
Yeah, put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the administration on that also, what may they suggest on that.
Put it on the agenda today. Can we do an extension without an advertising? I still can't hear. It would be a new one, it wouldn't be an extension of the-
Well, we're, we're anticipating the governor's going to make an announcement and then we'll react to that because we think that she's going to come out and extend it. And so we don't see the need to, us to create one right now or to extend ours until we know what she does.
Okay, thank you. That's all, thank you. We'll probably all look in the mechanics if we-
Any other councilmembers? Okay. We'll see you all at 10:30.